7.2, Consideration of Direction to the Cannabis Task Force to Prioritize Regulations Surrounding Cannabis Retail Operations in the First Quarter of 2023. And this is brought to you by myself and Supervisor Crandall. The reason I brought this up, I want to look, so going back about a year and a half ago, when Supervisor Simon and I were tasked with looking at the cannabis ordinance and then met with then Director Darby, there was a discussion on retail locations and how that would be handled throughout the county. And that discussion had never came to the full board. And, oh yes, please join us, Director Turner. So it's come to my attention that we have two retail cannabis locations coming to Main Street in downtown Kelseyville. And I thought this is a good time to have that conversation about what it looks like in our communities, particularly the unincorporated areas, in our little downtowns, in our commercial districts. And so one thing that Director Turner and I discussed is having a buffer zone between cannabis locations. And also looking at a zoning permit possibly. So those are the two items I want to discuss with the board today. And did you want to add anything?
No, just that I was glad to be added to this, and I'm willing to just listen to what you have to say, Director Turner.
Maria Turner, Community Development. The issue that we, or the option that I discussed with Supervisor Piska would be a location limitation, creating a distance in between cannabis retailers. So I've seen this in other jurisdictions. Its purpose then is to sort of spread them out, so you don't have as much of a heavy concentration in a single location. Currently, in C2, Community Commercial Zoning District, cannabis retailers, and this is, when I see retailer, I mean both adult and medicinal, so retailer slash dispensary. But in C2 cannabis retailers are use by right. And so there is no need for, there's no point where planning works with them on any sort of use permit or anything. And so adding, if the board supported adding a location limitation to sort of spread these out, then I would also recommend requiring a zoning permit. Because currently, it's a use by right. A zoning permit is also ministerial, and that would be the opportunity for the planning department to work with the applicants to just go through the list of criteria that are required to make sure that they're satisfying any sort of requirements prior to them moving in. But a zoning permit is not open to a public hearing, it's done at the staff level.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so now we can open it up for board discussion.
Thank you for bringing this. I've definitely gotten some comments from some of the folks who are hearing through the grapevine of potential retail cannabis stores coming into their neighborhoods. I agree with some sort of limitation. I don't know if it needs to be restricted to one area, because each area is going to create some type of issue, even if they're 1,000 feet apart or 2,000 feet apart. Like, I'd rather see two bars right next to each other than trying to figure out where to put two bars in two separate locations of the city to make sure it's appropriate. Maybe it's appropriate to have two cannabis stores next to each other, but not have more than five in the entire district or in the entire region. I would say we need a population divider, so that maybe one retail per 5,000, one per 3,000. I know that there is some numbers in the state, and I think we should look at that. That way, we don't end up with 20. We need to limit it so that we don't see that happening. I'd love to see that happen with other things, like tobacco, personally myself. But I think we do need to figure out a way to limit it. I don't know if I agree with the zoning permit. I still think that's too low. I really don't like that one is a by right use and another one is a major use, but why can't it just be a minor use? Can you tell me the difference between minor use and a zoning permit? I think the public should be able to provide comments, and that we go through the minor use process. I think major use is a little too strong, but a by right is, I think that that's created the, part of the reason for this conversation.
Certainly. The difference between a zoning permit and a minor use permit lies mostly in review. A zoning permit might be sent out to a few different departments for their review, but a minor is sent out to a larger number. The reason for that is that the different departments will return with a list of recommendations and requirements, and so, in a minor use permit. That then becomes our draft conditions of approval. The minor use permit is subject to a public hearing. It doesn't always go through a public hearing. The way we have it set up right now is that we send out the notice to the papers and to the neighbors, according to the government code, saying that we will not hold a public hearing unless there is a written request by a certain date. And so if nobody requests it, we don't hold the hearing, we just count it as approved. So that's the difference between a zoning permit, which is an over-the-counter, and a minor use permit. So the minor use permit does allow for that public input.
Yeah.
And it is a discretionary use permit versus ministerial.
Correct. And I would prefer it be at that level. Two final comments. One, there are rules that have changed at the state level. I could be incorrect, but I could have sworn that they got rid of the 1,000-foot setback from schools and parks. So obviously, I want to make sure that those are in place, because we have zero rules whatsoever underneath our cannabis retail. It was a surprise for me. I represent District 2, so I know that I'm not going to see any changes in my area, because it's all within the city. It's not going to happen in the middle of Highway 20, in the middle of nowhere. But there are no rules of setbacks, there are no rules of security. Everything is state-based rules that we're following, and the state's changing a lot of its rules. So if those rules are disappearing, I want to make sure that some of those rules come into play here locally, because we do need to ensure that the setbacks are appropriate, so that they're located in the right locations. And I forgot what my final comment was.
I agree with that, and I think one of the locations in Kelseyville is very close to a park, so I think you could be right on that. But you, your first point was, rather than looking at buffer zones, limiting the number per district or per area. And that is a discussion that I had with Director Turner, and so do you want to share your thoughts on that?
Certainly. Years ago, the board did establish a certain number of dispensaries per district. That was later rescinded by the board due to public outcry. Setting a certain number of any allowed use is problematic for staff, because the last thing that we want to do is make the county look arbitrary in its decisions. And so let's say we get five applications for one area that's only allowed a single permit. We have to have some way of deciding which application is going to succeed, which isn't always, you know, if it's a first-come, first-served, then we have the issue that the public could say, well, staff wasn't working on thy project fast enough, otherwise I would have been first. Or staff prefers that other guy, and so they did that other guy first. So it's just, it's a much more challenging process to work on that permit in the department. It's also almost impossible to do things randomly, which is what we also thought about doing back then. So anyway, yeah, for a variety of reasons, that wasn't my preferred option when I was talking to Supervisor Piska.
And while I can understand that that could create tension, especially if there's a lot of applications, I know, I can provide an example that in the city of Clear Lake, you get what you get. You have three maximum retail stores. They've added delivery-only, where it's not a walk-in, where the public has access to it. But it is what it is, and there's not been a problem because of that. So I think it's possible. And that was my last comment, and I apologize for jumping in, but I think we need to look at delivery-only, because I think there's been some situations where that would have been appropriate, rather than just retail where people walk in.
Yeah, so the item is brought as consideration of direction to kick this to the task force, and...
Well, it's to give direction to staff, who will then work with the task force?
I guess my understanding of the task force's role may be a little broader. I mean, I'm totally supportive of kicking this to task force to get their input and some ideas. A little uncomfortable prescribing what some of those ideas might be at this point. I'm, like probably most people, I was a little mystified to hear we had by right in C2 and major use permits in C3. Having said that, the prior board voted on that ordinance and approved it. I'm a little reticent to second-guess the wisdom of that board, even though it was a surprising decision. Now that the word is getting out, the C2 by right is a thing. I think you are seeing more of these stores popping up, and I think there may be some self-limiting factors that come into play, just as there was in the city of Lakeport when I was there. There's only so many parcels that would be zoned appropriately for that. And it's almost like we're 2014 again, where we're seeing that when everyone was a medical marijuana collective, and various cities and counties were playing whack-a-mole with those types of businesses. If there's any type of move to restrict this, I'm a little concerned that it's going to be open season on C2, and just like it was when it was whack-a-mole with medical marijuana dispensaries. On occasion, you have to think about uncomfortable things like moratoriums and stuff like that. And it may well come to that, if that's the consensus, is we're going to look for ways to limit this. I would caution that we may need to consider something like a moratorium to prevent further expansion, but I don't know how that would work. Setbacks from schools, buffers between businesses, all that stuff within a ministerial context sounds fine. Numerical caps within districts, seen that all over the state, very problematic, forces you to do ranking criteria among applicants. I think the free market has the biggest role in that, and I don't think we should be trying to limit that stuff. So I'm okay with sending it to the task force, basically to look at zoning permit-level-type restrictions that may put setbacks between similar businesses, that may apply a setback to a school or a park. But I wouldn't want to go above and beyond that to look at caps, if only because, again, our cultivators are in trouble. We do have Measure K. The voters did vote to start scraping some money and get it into the county coffers for these retail operations. They've been slow in coming. I'd love to see some good projects come forward. I'd love to see some things like signage discussed as well as part of that zoning permit. But I would just basically support kicking it to the task force to get their input. There's going to be some good industry input on that that I think will be valuable. And then I'd like to hear the recommendations of the task force before we lock down any specific direction at the board level. Thank you.
So for the zoning permit, wouldn't that have development and design standards, Director Turner?
Development and design standards are implemented through a development review or a design review permit, which gets triggered typically if there is an expansion of the footprint of the business or a significant alteration in the facade. So not necessarily.
Just, for quick clarification, I didn't say, maybe I said it, but I didn't mean it to sound that way. I don't think a limitation per district makes sense when some districts are tiny and some districts are much larger. But by population, to limit the number of retail stores, because, again, it makes no sense to have 20 of these in Lake County. It needs to be limited to what actually would work and function, so that we don't see a huge increase of things we don't need.
Is that, and I don't know about the state regulations either, but is that something that is already in place with the state?
No, there's a number that some communities use, and I think it's either 5,000 or 4,000. For every 4,000, you can have one dispensary or something like that. But I think that's up to us.
The state regulations do address excessive concentration. Similar to liquor licenses, I think where this is all going to head eventually is there won't be any local license attached, just as there isn't with the liquor store. But if there is a liquor license, like our wine bar near the playground in Lake Library Park, occasionally, there may be a hearing for findings of convenience or necessity for that business. And even those hearings can be fun. So I think the general state rule is avoid excessive concentration. There is a process where we could do that, but it isn't really locked in well at either the state or local level, to my knowledge.
Supervisor Simon?
Obviously...
Vice Chair Simon?
Thank you. And congratulations, Chair Piska. Yeah, I think it's a good conversation, obviously. Looking at the unincorporated areas in Lake County, we have an industry we're looking to support. So we do know that the retail portion is something that we've got to continue working on. So, you know, hopefully, too, in the conversations that we're having, I know our neighbors, Mendocino, have kind of embraced the cannabis tourism part of it, not just the retail, but other businesses that may open up to bring in that opportunity with this new industry. So, yeah, I'm in support of it going back to the board. Whether or not we come up with some numbered regulation on population, I think that's a good discussion to have as we move through that process. And we slowly but surely have some coming online. I'm not sure how many are in the pipe right now, heard rumors, but don't know for sure. But I know there's still one that's being opened up, or that has been improved in Lower Lake, that has not opened up yet in that area. So obviously, that's my district, very close to home. So, you know, continue this process, but I agree with getting it back to the Cannabis Task Force and seeing what options come back to us as a board. Sounds like there's a lot of good conversations going on, but looking at the state level, like we said, over the next five, six years, and we've been in it about five years now, you know, things are constantly changing, so appreciate the conversation and be available for any meetings that happen. Setbacks are very important. We had a lot of discussions, I was involved with that. So the 1,000-foot setback to the schools, other things, very important, that stays near and dear to my heart. I think that is, if there's opportunities, then we need to take advantage of those in the right spot. But keeping these as far away from the schools is very important. Schools, churches, daycares, you know, some of the other terms that were put in there are very important.
Supervisor Crandall?
I agree with the consensus, and I think it's important to have this done, because, as you noticed, in my district, you know, I have two, I think, right now. And one of the basis on, from the public, was the fact that it was near a school bus and things of that nature. So I think it would be a good thing to allow them to look at it, but there's a lot of opposition at times in my district when it comes to this, but it's gone through, and I would like to see a little more, you know, legislation that assists with that, so.
Okay. Yes.
One other thing, too. And Maria, thank you for bringing it up, too. You know, there is no guaranteed right in any business. If you're notified, I've gone through the process, as Maria had talked about, where a business was going to be put in our local area prior to me being on the board. They wanted to set up some food trucks down near some businesses in the middle of town, so when the area plan went through that process, we did, you know, I myself put in a complaint and said, hey, I want to have a meeting about this, I got a concern. Now food trucks are a little more prevalent than they were at that time. But had an opportunity as a community member to say, hey, yeah, I think we need to have a hearing on this, and I've got other folks. And so continue to get that message out there, that, you know, if you get a notice, please respond to it, if you have a concern about it, and it could open up some other opportunities for you and other concerned members. So what is that process called specifically?
Discretionary.
Thank you very much. All right. Just wanted to make sure we get that out there.
Supervisor Spatian?
Just a final comment. I know that we've put the Cannabis Task Force to task on the dry sheds and hoop houses and things like that. Would this be the next subject matter that they take on? Or are we asking to kind of sneak in and bring it back to us faster?
I wouldn't want to derail the work that's in progress. This would be the next item.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I don't know if you want to speak on how far along you are.
If the board says this is their next priority, this will be their next priority.
Are you finished with the...
Not yet. We do have a subcommittee with a member of the cannabis industry, the fire chiefs and Farm Bureau, that are all working on their own report, which will be alternative recommendations to the agricultural structure ordinance. That will then, we anticipate, that will be covered at the next task force meeting, which is two weeks from yesterday.
Okay.
And after that, then that moves on, and the task force would be available to consider this item, should the board request that of them.
We wouldn't want you to have any idle time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a question, and whether we can include this in the referral to the task force. Again, I think some of us are mystified how this actually arrived in the first place. So either it was genius three years ago, or whenever this ordinance passed to allow it by right, or it was a big, bad boo-boo, or something in between. So the only thing, I definitely, we're going to take it to the task force, but I hope we don't fully reinvent the wheel. I hope we will take occasion to revisit the original drafting of the ordinance, the comments that were made by our then-board members and our then-planning commissioners, because, you know, this didn't, you know, there's a paper trail here, so I'd like us to at least take a small journey back down that paper trail to see where we've been, so that we can be duly informed about where we want to go next, if that's fair.
Okay, so we'll open it up to the public. Do we have comments in the board chambers, or we do have a comment in the board chamber? Say your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sharon Zoller, I live in Kelseyville. My question, first of all, I think this is an excellent discussion. My question is of a historic nature. In 2011, the Board of Supervisors at that time, in December, passed an ordinance to eliminate all dispensaries in the county. This was a grassroots operation, came from group all around the county. And at that time, after the ordinance was passed, the existing dispensaries were closed down, and at that time, there were none in the incorporated parts of the county. So the supervisors at that time were Comstock, Smith, Rushing, Farrington, and Brown. Obviously, they're not, no longer supervisors. Actually, the only person who's still in county government who was at that time is Anita Grant. So I don't expect an answer. I'm just wondering, I don't recall that that ordinance had a sunset, and, you know, a decade has passed since then, so a zillion things have happened. My wonderment is, is that ordinance still in effect, that has maybe fallen off the table, and I don't know that, and I don't expect, Ms. Turner, to give me an answer right now. Turn your page and please give me an answer. But it's just a question. Is that ordinance still into effect? Was it superseded by something else? It's a wonderment, just a question. And I don't expect an answer.
Do you have a response?
I do.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
You are correct.
And I totally defer to Anita, to correct me if I'm wrong. My memory was that since we have a prohibitive ordinance, zoning ordinance, it means that if it doesn't allow for a use in the ordinance, it's not allowed. So the board created a, or did an ordinance that would allow a certain number of dispensaries per supervisor or district. The public outcry on that was the intention to referendum, that ordinance. And so it came back to the board at that point, that they could either send it to the ballot, to have the voters decide, or they could rescind the ordinance. They rescinded the ordinance, which then brought us back to zero. So it's different than a moratorium, but it went back to not having any allowance for dispensaries or retailers at that time. So then, when the board came back and created the regulatory structure that would allow for retailers and dispensaries, that's when they, it came back. That's when the ordinance then again allowed dispensary retail licenses within the county. That's my understanding, but Anita would probably know better than me.
That does sound correct, but I'm a lawyer, so I'm going to double-check all of it to make sure that that's accurate. Maria is absolutely correct. However, the county has always gone by the precept that if something is not allowed in the county's zoning ordinance, it is prohibited. That's not an unusual posture many jurisdictions take it. And if the county was at a point where facing a possible referendum, it determined to rescind the ordinance, which is certainly one of the choices that the board could have made, then anything that comes along subsequent to that that would regulate something that hadn't been previously allowed would be the order of the day, and it would be pursuant to those regulations. But as I said, just out of an abundance of caution, I'll check the timeframe to make sure, because, while it's my recollection, it's only that.
Okay. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk, and, you know, things change so quickly, and I appreciate having that background. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the board chambers? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Zoom Room.
Aaron McCarrick.
Aaron McCarrick.
Hello, Board. This is Aaron McCarrick in Clear Lake. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this item up, and I know that the issue at hand with this agenda item is if it should be pushed to staff to then take to the task force. So on that, I definitely agree with that. I think the task force is a good venue to discuss the revision of the cannabis ordinance, as well as, in general, other cannabis regulations and guidelines. It is a public forum, so people can certainly give comments when each of them come up. And thank you to the CDD and Director Turner for pushing through some time-sensitive issues like the dry structures and the cultivation hoop houses that the state has allowed, that the county has to get in line with those regulations. So in regard to a couple of things in terms of it going to the task force and the priority, I would say that, again, it's obviously the direction of the CDD, but there are some time-sensitive things, like getting in line with the state regulations, making sure the county is aligned with those. There's no discrepancies, just as the hoop houses are doing, as well as any time-sensitive cultivation things. And with the dispensary issue, it might be helpful to get our current dispenser, give our current dispensaries a lot of guidelines and parameters, such as onsite consumption, lounges, things like that. So it's not like we're, you know, creating more regulations without dealing with some of the gaps right now. That's just my feedback from being in the industry. And I would also like to encourage any companies that have gone through the discretionary permit application, either in downtown Kelseyville or in elsewhere, and have also gone through the state process, if they could maybe be grandfathered, because it's a lot of time and money to put into that, and they didn't have any regulations or guidelines to go by. So they were just going by what they knew, which was to get a discretionary permit and apply for the state permit or license, and go through that. It is also maybe interesting to note, if there's a way to align it with current liquor licenses, such as, I know in downtown Kelseyville, there's at least seven places to get wine, beer, or liquor as you're walking down the street. And some people don't prefer to do that, and some people prefer just the wellness factor of the cannabis plant. So thank you so much for taking this up. Again, I support being sent to the task force and look forward to joining them on public meetings.
Great. Thank you. And the intent is to, the current dispensaries are grandfathered, and there's nothing we can really do to change that.
They would be considered illegal, non-conforming use.
Yes. Okay.
Richard Durham?
Richard Durham? Oops.
Richard Durham, one time, thank you. On the density part of the dispensaries, I don't think it's a bad idea to have dispens- On the density part of the dispensaries, I don't think it's a bad idea to have dispensaries one down the road from the other, as a lot of retail shops actually conglomerate, so that when the shoppers come, they can go from one store to another. So, I don't think it would actually detract from the purchases of either store, and it may actually enhance and drive traffic to them, because they could shop both stores at the same time without driving across the county. That's all I have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, so that looks like we're, any other public comment? Last call in the board chambers? That's it? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the Board and close public comment. Oh. Okay.
Just popped up.
All right. We'll open it back up, and Jennifer Smith?
Sorry about that. I was expecting more comments. Jennifer Smith, I welcome this coming to the task force. One of the things that's a priority is opening up the discussion, overall discussion on zoning, as well as all the license types that we don't currently offer, and seeing what's available, onsite consumption, some of the tourism, and I think now would be the good time, if we're going to open up all those license types, basically what we refer to as a facilities ordinance, it would be a good time to review retail and make sure that we're in alignment with state, and as the overall goal in the task force is to align with the state and take a lot of the burden off of the local jurisdiction, we're hopeful that there's some good guidance relating to retail as well. So, welcome the opportunity to take this to the task force. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public input and bring it back to the Board for discussion and figure out the direction for CDD. Supervisor Swatier?
I just wanted to comment on a statement made by Erin McCarick. There are a lot of changes that are happening as of this January 1st, from state updates to their rules and regulations for cannabis, but I think, I think there's a glaring hole with the by-right use permit, and I'm glad that we're bringing it up, and I think we need to close that loop as quickly as possible before we have things happening that were unexpected when it was originally approved. So, I think it needs to remain a priority. There are a lot of other things, but I think that we need to focus.
So, keep a tight focus on this. I think so, too. There are other priorities. If we keep a tight focus on this, maybe we can move it through quickly and bring it back, you know, soon. Are there any other?
The priority between the temporary structures and this, was the goal to bump this ahead of temporary structures?
No.
To take it next in line?
Yes.
Then it's more a question, just based on the activity we've seen, two in his district, couple popping up, we just rejected an appeal that would have been in a rezone C3. If the concern is these are popping up sooner than later, and if the word is going to get out that this is going to get kicked to the task force, and there may be something happening in six months to a year from now, based on past experience with the old medical marijuana dispensaries of old in multiple jurisdictions, what you can see happen is when there's a discussion to tighten things up, you'll actually see a flurry of activity forward. So, if the concern is that these are getting out of control too fast, too soon, in addition to this, you may want to consider bringing back an item at a future meeting for a moratorium on new dispensaries until we figure this stuff out. We can't really tackle that today, and that's a whole separate discussion, but I do think that may be an unanticipated consequence if we provide this direction today, is it's actually going to possibly have some consequences that haven't been thought about, and if we do see that type of uptick in activity, and again, how would we know? Nobody's dropping applications on these. They're just gobbling up C2 properties at this point. It may be something you want to consider. So, I'm just letting the cosponsors of this know that this is certainly a positive step and going to support this moving forward, and having the task force take diligent steps toward really crafting what the future is, but there may be another step that you may want to consider in the short term at a future meeting. So, I just want to share that as a possibility. Thank you.
Reopen public comment. We have somebody in the chambers. Do you want to come up and speak?
I would like to know where the dispensaries that have already been voted on stand. I understand that you voted no against the dispensary near Lower Lake, so what happens if the task force comes back? Is that still no, or can this woman appeal and go back? Thank you. I don't know about the zoning.
That was for a zone change. Do you want to answer that?
That, that one was for a rezonin, I think it needed a general plan amendment as well, to change a single parcel from C3, which is service commercial, into C2, which is community commercial, creating a spot zoning issue, and the Board denied the appeal.
Yeah. So, that was a zone change.
Upheld the appeal, overturning the decision of the planning commission.
Right. Okay. So, I know you have a lot of notes from what we've said.
If I might be able to sort of see if I'm on the right track. There are two issues that we're talking about. First is the by-right versus discretionary use permit for retail. This is all specific to retail. And then the second one is regulating concentration. So, a few of the different options that have come up would be a proportionate number based on population, and I'm not sure if you mean population of community, which is a little harder to sort of solidify versus supervisorial district, which might be easier, because that's a known boundary. Secondly, or otherwise, a location limitation, which would be a spacing between dispensaries or retails, or if there are any other options that the task force might bring to the table.
And we want to make sure that we've got the setbacks in case they have.
I sort of took that as a side research.
Yes.
Yeah. That's not something that I think the task force would speak to yet, because the, yeah, I'm pretty sure that the state's setbacks were 600 feet, and ours were 1,000 when they were first instilled, so I'm going to go back and double-check to make sure that those are not, that those are still set.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to let the Board know at a future meeting.
I don't believe we have a setback on ours. I know it's blank. It just says retail cannabis, and then there's no specifics underneath it.
And I will definitely do a deep dive on that one and get right back to you. So many things changed in the three years that have gone.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, the first part, time, place, and manner restrictions, that's just garden variety stuff, totally, and I think there's consensus, if I'm just counting people, totally supportive of that. Not as enthused about numerical limits, but I'll let the task force chew on that. So, if that's the direction, as we kick that issue to the task force, that's okay, too, but just based on other communities, again, and some of the challenges of ranking and stuff like that, if we're going to permit it all, the idea that we're going to somehow micromanage the cannabis economy through a limitation on the number of locations based on any criteria is probably going to be problematic, but we're kicking it to the task force anyway. I don't want to limit those discussions, but the thing I'm looking for their guidance on most of all is time, place, and manner restrictions, not so much numerical caps on the number of businesses.
I have a process question for the Board once you get to that. We're still clarifying the topics, so.
Is there anything else to add on the topics? Okay.
To date, land use issues will go to the Cannabis Task Force.
Yes.
Now, the Ag Advisory Board, but I think that might just be for cultivation, and then the Planning Commission before it comes back to the Board. Would you like, we're only, we've only been speaking today about getting input from the Cannabis Task Force. Would you like me to also take those recommendations from the task force to the Planning Commission before I come back to you, or would you like me to skip Planning Commission, which I actually don't recommend, and then come straight back?
Supervisor Swatier?
I would say we're discussing land use. They are the body that makes decisions for land use, and that we should definitely go through that. I don't see a reason to go through the Ag Advisory, especially since we have Ag on the Cannabis Task Force, and either way, the final decision still lays within our ability to make those decisions. It would only be comments, and they can bring those public comments either at the task force level, at the Planning Commission level, or at the Board of Supervisors level, so I don't know that a retail license needs to go through all of the above. And I'm glad the fire districts are on the task force, because retail does require safety measures, and they'll provide their input on that.
The only nuance I would add to that is depending what the task force says, retail can incorporate both storefront retail, and when they talk about cannabis tourism, they're often talking about microbusinesses and the ability to do retail out in the farmlands. That's an evolving business model, but if the task force, for example, kind of tries to tackle storefront retail and microbusiness, public-facing retail operations in the same fell swoop, that may end up wanting to go to Ag Advisory, because that would involve retail operations out in the countryside more so than our population centers. So, it gets a little nuanced, but I totally agree. I mean, for storefront retail, it's pretty slam dunk. I wouldn't see that going to Ag Advisory, but if we branch out into a broader discussion on basically farm-direct marketing and microbusiness retail, then we may, at some point in the future, want to loop in Ag Advisory. Not at that point yet. Let's see where the task force takes us on that.
Any other comments?
If I could just determine if there is consensus to branch out into microbusiness, because I would prefer to keep microbusiness with a holistic evaluation on the task force and stick to retail right now.
Yes.
If that's.
If you just call it storefront retail, I think that would be the clarification you're looking at, yeah.
Super. Thanks.
And I would say retail, just in general, period, not microbusiness. Stick with the retail license, and the retail license can be delivery, or it can be storefront. I know that that was brought up, but I think the retail license specifically allows for specific types, and that's not microbusiness.
And then, lastly, if I could just get a consensus on timeline, so that I can adjust my calendar accordingly. When would you like to see this back?
Me, too.
Well, I feel like it is an urgent matter, but you have another priority in front of you, so as it, as quickly as it can move through your schedule, but we are not giving you a time constraint.
Work with that.
Okay. All right.
How long is left with the other? How long do you anticipate the other?
Dry sheds.
Yeah. How long do you anticipate that taking?
The task force was very receptive to entertaining the report from the subcommittee, and so I do anticipate that we could get the structure ordinance done at our next meeting, so long as that subcommittee is able to hammer out a final report for us. We were anticipating doing it yesterday, but, you know, we had this flood, and people have been sick, and so unfortunately, this was our, we had to cancel yesterday's meeting, but they're all going to be ready to pick it up again in two weeks.
Supervisor Swatier?
So, there's no data that was provided today. Do you have an idea of how many approved or applications you have received? Just because if the, we're hearing it's urgent, I'm not going to deny that the by-right issue creates that urgency, but at the same time, I think that a good point was made, that if it takes too long, maybe looking at a moratorium, so I just, I don't want to set a timeline where you're rushed to bring something back to us, but maybe there needs to be, we need to look at something in the interim. So, I would say communicate with the sponsors so that they can make the decision on whether to bring something in the interim or not, just because I want to make sure we do the right thing with the changes that need to be made.
Sure. I just sent out a lifeline to staff upstairs. They should get me a definite number on that one. They had, they gave me a sheet already, and it's upstairs. But also, one thing, while they're looking at that and getting back to me, it's important to note that we don't always know really about the ones in C2, because they're not coming to planning. I know of one that was just assigned, no, two, one in Kit's Corner, one, I can't remember where the other one was, but they come in for maybe a sign permit or something like that. So, there we go. Two approved, major use, one operative, one design review approved. So, we're at three? I thought we were at four, but I can also get a final number for you, too. But that doesn't detract, or doesn't take away from where this Board has sort of focused on today, which was the by-right use in C2.
Does, do our good friends at DCC share information to the point that they would not necessarily share all the contents of a pending retail application, but they could tell us that they exist, that they have received X amount of retail applications in the county?
I think we can get that information for you, yes.
I think that may be useful as we determine, you know, whether an interim step is needed.
Right.
That would be a good number.
Because just buying up a storefront in C2 is not the same as actually having a license to operate with the state in order to establish a retail. You're just kind of a store owner.
Right. Okay, so, yeah, we'll get that information from you when you receive it and figure out our next steps, if we have to go that route.
Certainly. So, I'm going to research the, we're going to do a comparison of what's still in place regarding regulations for retail and the definite number of retail that we know of. I would be happy to send that to Susan for distribution to the Board.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.